All right, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Welcome, Rathrum City Council, Mayor Hill. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The time is there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. If everyone that has a mic, if you could poke the little button on it and turn it on. Just so that I can turn it on? Yeah. Perfect. Thank you. I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
Right.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, we're going to go into our work session. Thank you all for coming. We, it was recommended that we get together and have conversations over the joint powers agreement that's recently been drafted and reviewed by our council. Your council, I know, had a big hand in drafting it. There's a lot of language in here that, at least I'm not comfortable with, and I know some of the other trustees had some, like, why are we doing this? This doesn't make any sense. So it seems reasonable that we should all come to the table and just have a conversation. The last agreement that we had in place with the city of Rathrum was effective June 2008. And we, it's my understanding that we, there seemed to have been some liberties taken with our facilities, and so we needed to bring it back up to the top again and rediscuss everything. Because our facilities need to support Park and Rec, but they also need to support our own schools, and they also need to support the competitive leagues that run within our community. So that was the premise from the board as to why we wanted to revisit this and maybe put some better parameters in there for everyone involved. And what we received back is quite lengthy and has information in there that I don't really think is pertinent to the intention of the joint powers agreement. If I call it an MOU, that's what I'm referring to. So why don't I just open it up for discussion in conversing with all of you and other trustees? If you guys have any comments that you'd like to bring out for this conversation?
My first comment would be, you know, in days gone by, we used to say, hey, let's get together and agree to work things out to share, you know, our facilities, that's right, shake hands and that. So yeah, this thing is, how many pages long? Six pages long? It's got more legalese in it than most attorneys.
No, it's 10 pages, Bob. It's 10 pages.
Okay, well, we'll have to add it. I think it's unfortunate that we have to get to a point in time where you have to have that much language just to say, hey, you can share our facilities and in return we'd like a couple of figures.
Right.
But that's where we are, I guess.
How do you all feel about this joint powers agreement?
So somewhat new to the joint powers agreement, but I'm reading through it, it seemed like it was something that was, gosh, I don't even know how this came about originally, that between the school district and the city. Renewing an agreement that existed previously, I haven't seen what the 2008 version looked like.
Oh, you didn't get that? Can we get copies?
Yeah, it was a three-page document, and it was specific to just utilizing the facilities and what that entailed.
Yeah.
Which, back when it first came about, it was, you guys use our facilities, we're not going to charge you, and you, in consideration of that, you guys are, I believe, the watering of the field was in here.
And the history of that, just to go back a little bit farther.
Oh, and $2,500 for construction.
Yeah, back in the early 80s, right after the high school building was built, it was occupied 1979, the city and the school district got together and said, let's work out a plan to develop for recreational purposes, the field over behind the high school there. And so we jointly applied for a state park and recreation grant. And then there was an agreement actually put together to jointly develop that field, and part of that agreement at the time was that the city would provide water. Ownership would retain, be retained by the school district, you know, facilities would be available for community use at all times, other than when the school had to have it, that kind of thought and language. So that's kind of where this all originated, originally. And then later on, I think, at the point in time where we were going to add on to the high school, I guess when that last draft of the joint powers agreement was developed. And the consideration at that point in time was waiving some of the fees for permitting the additions to the high school. And then, of course, we agreed for city park and rec to use facilities and so forth. In a nutshell, that's kind of the history of it.
Yeah, it was $2,500. That was waived on the permitting fees.
Is that the gym at the high school?
Yeah, yeah, the big gym.
So I could see where the city would want to be able to use that a little bit. That's probably the biggest gym in the city at the time, with a few.
We're getting you guys copies of the prior agreements.
Yes.
It's only a couple pages, so it's not the...
It's three.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones, you mentioned the water. Could you be more definitive about that?
Well, that area where the football field is, is the area that we're talking about that we applied for the grant to develop. And a part of that joint agreement at the time, as we applied to the state for the grant, was that the city would provide the water for that area.
Which...
After that field was developed, and we actually put the track on it and so on and so forth, then, you know, all of those areas became available for community use, where we have all kinds of people that go out and run and walk on the track and do those kind of things, play on tennis courts, play basketball out there, and so on and so forth. The baseball field was not a part of that, but the rest of it behind the high school was what was included at the time.
So you're questioning the fees in this new agreement? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the agreement strayed, at least in my opinion, on the use of the facilities, and is now becoming encompassing of crossing guards, irrigation services, city fee waivers, and the SRO. Now, what I didn't understand was why we would include the SRO in this, given that we have an MOU specific to the SRO, and it totally oversees our commitment with the city with respect to the SRO. So it doesn't compute in my brain why we are covering the SRO in two agreements. I think the SRO should be maintained under the MOU for the SRO, because all of the specificity within that agreement is to the SRO and that program, and, you know, the compensation that we pay, et cetera. The crossing guards in here, I don't think we've ever been under any type of a written agreement with respect to the crossing guards. And if we need to memorialize that with an agreement, that's fine, but I think there needs to be a little bit more specificity with that, because it doesn't make sense what's put in here, because it's saying that you guys are going to provide five crossing guards, but if they go away, then they go away, and then the district can provide crossing guards if they want. It doesn't necessarily seem to have any boundaries in it, and you guys are paying, or wait, we're paying for the crossing guards from the city, is that correct, or they're paying them? I can't remember.
We're paying them.
Okay.
Yeah, I think...
You guys are paying for your crossing guards, we're paying for the ones that we provide.
And so, in the spirit of that, why does that even need to be in here? It seems like they're...
Go ahead, Tom.
Manager, if I may, some of the intent on this was, as Lisa and I talked about, the joint facility sharing, they were asking for some considerations in fees. They kind of initially started off this conversation because they wanted to show a, kind of a balance between the facilities that the school district provides to the park and rec program with some sort of balance that the city provides to the school district. So the intent, based off of that, was to show some of the things that the city provides to the school in relation to creating a balanced in the facilities, okay? And so they...
To show the full give and take of...
The full give and take. As a matter of fact, there was a few things that weren't included in here that the city could put in as well, but trying to show a balance between what the city provides to the school district and then what the school district provides to the city, so all of those items were included in a document that shows a balance. Like, for example, in the school resource officer thing, it's only a bullet point in here to say, we have a separate agreement. It's part of the balance between what the school district does and what the city does in trying to create that balance. So that's why a lot of these things were kind of put in there, only to try and show that balance, that it's just not the school district providing facilities, but what the city does to help support the school district.
For Chair Nelson.
Yeah.
We are actually paying money to the city for crossing guards. I just pulled up our June bill list, and in April, we paid water, sewer, crossing guard, and SRO.
Yeah, so...
Okay, so we're paying for them.
We pay, so it's a 50-50 split within the crossing guards that the city does and that. So we pay the crossing guards, they're on our payroll, and then we bill 50% of that to the school district.
So is that all of the crossing guards?
No, it's the five crossing guards. It's four now, one of the gentlemen quit, so it's Wanda...
Three out there right now, with one maybe coming back.
Yes. I believe it's Roy that is kind of the questionable thing, so right now it's just Betty, Nora, and Wanda.
Those are the three that the city pays on our payroll?
Currently, right now. Roy is also, but he's inactive because of medical reasons.
And the school provides additional?
Three down in the Rathrum area, and we have two open.
So it's just the three city ones that the school district pays 50% of, but they pay 100% of their own?
Yes.
Well, and respectfully, the, at least it was my understanding, the intention of this joint powers agreement, I don't know so much that it was about showing everything that we're in conjunction with within the city. It's just specific to the use of our facilities and what we would be receiving, for lack of a better way of explaining it, for allowing the city to use our facilities without the, given that other entities are required to pay fees. There's been some struggle and frustration with Park and Rec and their approach to utilizing the facilities, because they are a priority, but there has to be a balance in their priority with our schools and with club teams. And it's my understanding that there's been kind of a power struggle when they just say, we want every single school, every single day, and we'll get back to you with what we don't need, as opposed to others that come to us and say, hey, can we rent your building on this day? And when there's a blanket across this calendar saying Park and Rec may have that, that's not equitable to the community as a whole. So trying to find a balance of how can we meet Park and Rec's needs for all of their teams and events that they hold, as well as supporting the, the club teams and whatnot, all the rest that goes into utilizing our facilities. I mean, our high school is, like, booked seven days a week, almost 24 hours, it seems.
Always somebody in that?
Yeah, there is. Which is great for the kids, because that's what we're about, is, you know, making an environment that's growing these kids in all different facets. So I appreciate your input that, you know, we were just trying to show everything that's going on, but I don't know that it's appropriate within this agreement, is the point that I'm trying to make.
Yeah, I think it muddies the waters. I think we all, because here's the thing, is if something were to go awry at one and there was an issue of one, they need, in my opinion, they need to stay separated, so that we're only dealing with one issue at a time. If there needs to be something that lists, itemized these agreements, and we're in agreement that these agreements exist...
Yeah.
Because I think what I'm hearing from the city is that it's almost as if the city wants to make sure that the district and the public understand that the city also contributes, and that's what I'm hearing, I feel like, is that maybe the city feels like that's not understood enough. So maybe what we need to keep everything separate is their own separate agreements, but then some kind of understanding that lists these are, which would be great for both parties, because as we change, we would have something to say, oh, we have these five MOUs with the city.
Right.
Somebody needs to keep up with them. Which I think it's growing things, to tell you the truth, just for our whole area. You know, we just can't do everything on a handshake anymore like we have in the past. That would be my recommendation. I understand, I hear what they're saying, just so that there is somewhere that the public can look and say, here is the balance.
Right.
Here is the split. Here's what the city does for the district, here's what the district does, because we both serve the community, right?
Absolutely.
So for the community to be able to find that, your website, our website, I think, would probably help in making it go forward, and then everybody feels like they have what they need, and we can get on to the next business.
That's right.
So to clarify, that you guys are wanting for this joint powers agreement to be focused on facilities and not include the SROs, right?
It should rest.
Okay. Not include the crossing guards?
Correct, because...
And then the water? Are you guys feeling that that should or shouldn't be in there?
Well, I think the water was part of, originally was part of the original agreement for the facilities use, is that correct, Trustee Jones?
Yes.
With the water, yeah, so...
So you're feeling that it's appropriate to leave the water in there as part of the agreement? There, you guys have already mentioned there's a separate agreement that exists for the SROs that's very specific.
Comprehensive, it covers all of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So perhaps a different MOU than for these other things that are being removed from this joint powers agreement? Do you feel it is appropriate to have, like, maybe an appendix that's referencing those? That you have one kind of master document that keeps an inventory of what those things are as an appendix list, that then references that there's these other MOUs that are in existence, so that you can, you have something that kind of, I don't know, references it? Because I think that kind of sounds like what we were trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds fair to me. I think that would be, and it would keep it, make it a lot cleaner also, so that if there was...
Because if there's an issue with the crossing guard, then we should just be addressing that within that document, not this full document. It seems unnecessary. If there's an issue with the SRO, of course, we're going to fall back on the SRO MOU that we have in place already to address it. That way, it's not affecting all the other agreements that we have in place with the I hate sitting like this, because we're always bothering, you know? But it works for the moment. And the other thing that I didn't quite understand is why this needed to be executed for 10 years, which, given what you're wanting to do within the water, which is, you know, take the highest month, and then if we ever go over that, then we're being billed for it, kind of negates the intention of, so the city supplying the water for that field, because if it does go over, then we're being charged for it, but...
And I think that that language is something that's consistently found in other areas that we have water agreements with, that where we take the highest month and use that as an average, and what that does for us is that, in the event that there's a maintenance deficiency, that there's a water main break, or that there's an excessive water utilization, that it's not, it's not the city that's responsible for covering what that, what that costs us, so...
Yeah, so a couple of different things on the water thing. So that, right now, we've been going through a very detailed water study on our rates and the fees that we collect and all that. And part of that study is, is we've got the water that we pump out of the well, and then we've got the water that we bill for. And right now, we have a 30% leakage, meaning that we have water that, so if we pull out a million gallons of water, we're only billing for, or recording for 700,000 gallons of it. So we got, like, a missing 300,000 gallons. Definitely not within the school property, I'm not trying to say that at all, but we have a lot of areas within the city that don't have meter systems, and so we're trying to put meters into all of those systems so that we have those.
Wasn't there also a litigation in, I think it was Lewiston?
Yeah, I was going to get to that, but, so then, what we have is, we have a more accurate tracking of the water that's being used around the city. We also have situations where, since we're not on site, if there's a leak within this particular system, nobody would ever know, okay? Because leaks can happen underground through an irrigation system, and they just drain. And so you could say, using this only as an example, if there was a hole in the irrigation system, it'd be leaking water, nobody would ever know, thousands and thousands of gallons could be dumped, but there's nothing out there to say what's happening. And so hopefully with a meter, then we are able to be able to tell that. It's good for you guys as well, it is for us, because that water leakage can end up damaging the fields and so forth like that, because you can end up having sinkholes or whatever the case may be. But with that, then, it helps us to know where the water is at. And like the mayor stated, if there's a maintenance thing, who does cover then the maintenance? I mean, and take care of that. With the city of Lewiston, currently, right now, sitting at the Supreme Court, there is a lawsuit in regards to water and who pays for it. So right now, the city of Lewiston, they do not charge themselves for water usage. So, for example, in that case, this water that the school district is using, the water of the field, nobody's paying a bill, okay? Nobody. And so what ends up meaning is the rate payers then are subsidizing that water usage. And that's what the lawsuit is about.
Because it costs a certain amount to run the water, so if, if we're not covering, or if the city's not covering that water, that dollar amount for that water that's being used to irrigate, nobody is, but it still has to be paid by somebody, so that means all of the other citizens are having to pay more for their water.
Right. And so in the lawsuit, the question is, is who should pay for it? Should the taxpayer pay for it, or should the rate payer pay for it? Nine times out of 10, it's the same people, but it's the way the billing is done that is different. In a tax situation, everybody pays that burden equally, but in a rate payer situation, the more water you use, the more you're subsidizing city's water. And so that's one of the other things that we have to fix within the city as well, is because right now, our rate payers are basically subsidizing the school district's water, the city's water, all of our parks' water. This next budget year, the city is paying for all of those using taxpayer funds rather than rate payer funds.
Well, you said that only with the, as far as the district water, we're being subsidized by the rate payers, it only pertains to the field, I just want to make that clear for the public.
Oh, yes.
Now we'll listen to this.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. It's not all of the water.
The district pays the water bill, and we're just talking about the field.
Yeah, it's just the field, because the field is the only thing within the school district that doesn't have a meter, so nobody knows what water's used, what, what all of that is, and so we're trying to get those things resolved as well.
Which, I mean, there's no, in my, in, from my perspective, there's no issue with putting a water meter there, absolutely, it needs stubby metered water. My concern is, is, you know, you're going to take the highest month, and then we're stuck, and so it...
What do you mean, stuck?
Well, if, if you have a month that's high, and say, for whatever reason, the rates have increased, so now we're up paying more, it's, we're going to get stuck paying for water when you choose the month that is the highest, and if we go over that, then we're paying for that water. The way it's worded is that we would start paying, you know, if we go over that, then we're starting to pay for the water.
But the likelihood of you going over, if we're taking the highest month, it's giving you the most favorable...
And we're talking water usage, not water bill. So like, if you use...
Gals.
Two million gallons of water, that sets the ceiling. It's not the dollar value of the 2 million gallons. It's only the...
Right.
The usage, not the dollar value. I, we didn't want to cap it, because if rates go up, that could mean, you know, if you were capped, that this is, your ceiling is $1,000 worth of water, then as rates went up, that would put the school district in a hurtful situation.
Closer, closer, and closer.
Right. We're thinking solely on the gallons, so no matter what the price is for the gallons, it would be the gallons that would be used as the ceiling, not the, not the dollar value.
So taking the highest month then gives you guys the best, I perceive is the best option, but...
So that's Section 2A2, for everybody that's trying to find it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was.
And for my fellow citizens, and here's some pens back here that I found, you guys can always grab one of those, it's easier to underline and stuff with it. So we're, we've jumped down to 2A...
So it's only if we go over that high amount? Yeah, not a dollar, not a gallon, no.
The lawsuit that you're talking about, so is that an appeal at the Supreme Court, or it went straight to the Supreme Court?
So the district ruled in favor of the city on that one, and so the defendant took it to the Supreme Court, and it's waiting to be scheduled to the Supreme Court.
So they're hoping that the Supreme Court overturns the lower court then?
That's what the, the preparation lawsuit did.
Okay, so as it is, as it sits now, unless the Supreme Court changes it, then the city doesn't have to charge themselves, which most government entities, they don't...
Most cities right now, in kind of hedging the bets, are hedging that the Supreme Court will overturn the district's decision. And we had the same type of issue with streetlights, and this was done back in 2016, where the decision was that because streetlight isn't a measurable benefit to each residential use, you get a street light on the corner, but everybody pays the same rate for the light, but some people don't have any light, so it was determined that it was a tax, not a, it was an illegal tax and not a fee. And so we had to move our streetlight fees away from the utility bill and move it on to the sales tax supported thing. So it's, it's the same premise, that's why most of the cities are hedging that this is going to be the outcome, based off of the same streetlight decision from the Supreme Court.
So one of my concerns, I'm kind of jumping around to the document a little bit. So I was hoping that we could just, since we're already down to 2A2, does everybody agree on the first one? The city is going to provide a water meter?
Well, it says they're going to provide it, does that mean you're also paying to have it installed in the Dahlhook Dutch?
Yes.
Okay, because that's not clarified in here.
It is. It says that the city approved and provided irrigation meters shall be, I guess it doesn't...
Shall be installed, right.
It's installed, I guess it doesn't say.
It's under the city's consideration, so that's why we were assuming that it is, that this is what we're doing on behalf of the school district. We're going to install and provide the irrigation meter. So we can clarify that up, I don't have any problem with that.
Well, in A I, it says in consideration, the district's provision of recreational facilities in the city as detailed above, the city agrees to continue to provide irrigation water to the district free of charge. But it doesn't, I guess that doesn't talk about the meter.
And it went down, so it's A I one?
Yeah.
It talks about being installed.
As long as the following condition is...
None of the conditions. So I guess I, I guess my confusion here is how are we charging for something that we're providing in lieu of a service that's been provided to us?
We have to pay the bills, so whatever.
So either way, we're paying?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless we go over, and then it's no longer free of charge, which is what you're stating in paragraph nine.
That's what I'm saying, is what...
I know.
Why, why is there an overage at all if we've already agreed to provide the water?
Well, that's, uh, the only concern that I think that we're trying to safeguard against is a maintenance problem that could cost the city thousands and thousands of dollars that, that we're not budgeted for or prepared for.
Weight against the city's obligation to provide recreational facilities, like build buildings and things like that, the school district is currently providing? So I mean, that's the, right, that's the, that's the, the weight of it, right? The risk to us, the city, is that if something does happen, yeah, we're going to have to pay for it. The risk to the school district is what?
The...
How does the li, I guess my question would be, in us using the facilities, is that liability so much for the school district? If someone gets hurt, let's say?
Oh, there's a liability section.
Yeah, so if it's our programs, we're liable for our program seven.
So one of the things I, I'd like to note in here is that we're talking about details right now. We're talking about why do we need such a comprehensive document? I'm a, I'm a person that likes to have protections built in, so knowledge can be done. One of the concerns was why ten years? That's because next year, when, two years from now, when the city council comes over, and we don't have documents in place, and you guys are back here with us, but it's different people possibly, because elections have done that, right? If you don't have something that's long-term, you end up with very short-term, no blocks. And you don't work, people are going to take off with it.
But you can't encumber a future council anyway, so...
Well, this document does. It encumbers the city, but remember that old agreement was from two thousand eight.
Right.
It's been sixteen years.
That's why we're here.
So let's go, let's go over ten years, I don't...
Yeah, and I think if, you know, at least having a, a limit is, is a good reminder for everybody that, hey, we have to revisit this thing. We can't just let it go forever and ever.
So that, that was my point of view, I mean, ten years, why I believe in it, um, is because it's, it's a long enough period, but not too long to realize that change is too big a fact over time that we need to build an address.
Well, in my opinion, it was way too long, especially with the thought... What's that?
The sixteen or the ten.
The ten, and in all fairness, this agreement was actually automatically renewable every year unless the party has brought it back to the table. So it wasn't, uh, you know, we'll revisit it in ten years. They were supposed to be revisiting it annually, and if there was need to address and make changes, then it would be done. But no one did that, so it just sort of skated on by for sixteen years. With ten years, to me, there's so much in here that could go awry. I don't want to be committed for ten years without reviewing this. I think it needs to be an annual review, or, I mean, two years, given that people turn, change, et cetera. Are all year terms two years, or are they four?
Four.
Years are four, ours are only two. No.
Every two years, somebody's...
I wouldn't be on board if I had to.
Two years, no way.
It's every two years, we have an election for a seat or two. Okay, that's what it is.
And that's the same with them, they're staggered, just like we are.
Staggered, okay. So given that, that is my concern with committing for ten years.
But you also have... It should be more frequent.
Correct.
But you also have...
Okay.
You also have in here the termination clause that allows you to terminate at any time.
Well, I don't think termination is the thing, I think a good communication, so that sixteen years don't go by, and we meet every sixteen years. Every MOU that the district does, we do, we review on an annual basis, simply because there's other statutes that require the district do things on an annual basis. Um, I think it's, it's part of the, I don't think it's to terminate, but I think it's good to keep the conversation going, especially with the explosive growth that we see. You guys suffer it, we suffer it. And, and who knows what's gonna change? I mean, you guys are gonna build that big sports complex for you soon, right?
So that's curious, I just said this, you review all your MOUs every year, did you review that one every year?
No, we didn't know, this board didn't know it existed. We had no idea until we found it.
Until we got the new one, and we were like, wait a second here, let's go look at the old one.
So that's why we're trying to make lists, so whomever comes after us, there's the...
Maybe say what's out there.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I wouldn't want the...
We're setting them up better than we were setting them up.
I wouldn't want you guys to be out of your own compliance. I mean, if you have a requirement to review the MOU every year, then, you know, that's fine. I guess the question would be, is the verbiage here allow for, even if we say a mandatory review every ten years, that there's optional reviews that can be initiated by either side?
Well, we can just...
So that if the school district does an annual review, and you guys just go, yep, you know, bam, this is done, it looks good, you can do that, but in the meantime, if you do find something that's wrong, and it's before that ten years, you can bring it back to the city, and, you know, we can renegotiate.
Yeah, see, the language in the old one just simply said, it gave a date about the effectiveness, and then it said automatic renewal each successive year thereafter, unless either party gives a written notice, otherwise blah blah. I mean, something, you know, that it keeps the renewal going, but in ten years, like, I understand what you're saying, so we gotta sign the dotted line again, so it's...
So you're, you guys are comfortable with that language if it had an automatic renewal with a, um, an expiration clause? So in ten years, it has to be signed, but every year thereafter, or every year in between has automatic renewal unless the parties, um, wish to renegotiate the terms?
You want it sooner than that?
Uh, my only concern about doing that is that we could possibly end up in the same position that we're in right now, where nobody in this office knew that that document existed
Right.
until we started digging into the depths of the bowels of this building and found it. And that's when we reached out to Leon to ask if we could talk about updating it, because it was so old. Um, so if, if it doesn't stay on our radar for that, that's what I like about the annual review. So whatever the language is, whether we review it, um, our typical language is that the, that the superintendent will meet with whomever is in charge. So I meet with Tommy for the SRO MOU by April first of every school year, just to talk about, how's the program going? Do we need to make any modifications? And then if we want to tweak it, then I bring those changes back to the school board with the MOU, and then they approve it, and we move forward. So it's not a big deal, but it keeps it on our radar, and it also, the language requires that there's a conversation so that we're not going a couple years and then being frustrated because something's not working, but we're not really communicating.
In that example, is it, um, is it requiring signature for, for both parties to pass it? Or is it just something that's automatically?
Well, right now, the way ours are all written, it's not an automatic renewal, everything has to be re-approved every year. Um, but, I mean, you guys can decide how, what you want that language to be. I just would prefer that there's language in there that indicates that Leon, Leon and I are going to meet every spring, talk about how it's going.
We can possibly take the wording the same as the SRO MOU.
Um, yeah, it was, it is in, I'm trying to find it, it does exist, and it calls it a committee, and the committee is the superintendent...
Four, uh, item number four, bullet point F on page five. It's this creation of a joint board, which is not acceptable language.
So basically, it'd be a mishmash of this and the last clause, or the effective clause of the old one would satisfy the meeting annual basis. Yeah, if we use the language from the SRO MOU to replace the joint board, would we?
Okay, that, I think that would be helpful. I just don't want it, I just don't want it to fall off anybody's radar.
Right.
Absolutely.
And that's why I think we need a document that lists appendices to anything, yes, so we all know.
Yeah, I like, uh, Mayor Hill's idea of having a, like, an appendix that maybe is attached to each one of these MOUs, that kind of cross-references the other MOUs that exist between the two parties.
So you guys, I hear you're opposed to a two-year agreement, preferring for just a single-year agreement?
I think if we maintained a single-year agreement, that would be in line with the other MOUs we have, with the county, with, uh, the city, with you people. If, can I ask what your aversion is to having it renewed annually?
Not.
Okay.
I'm just asking, it seems, you know, I mean, if there's an option to have a longer agreement where we don't have to go through and hash this out again, that you save time and, and resources and things of, of doing that, and so...
Well, and all...
I'm just trying to feel where you guys are at, if you guys were, and then hold to a two-year agreement, and that didn't have any opposition anywhere, that is there any harm in doing that, and still provides you an opportunity to review? And then I think the reason that I had heard from, I felt like you guys decided it was two years, is that you have an election every two years, and so, um, you guys have all approved this, it'll be here next year. And so then the following year after the election, that you have a new board and have another opportunity to hash it out. And I'm not trying to tie your opinion to anything, I'm just trying to figure out what, what is it that we need to come back with to, to get an agreement approved?
Well, respectfully, I mean, and the only issues I personally have with some of our MOUs is the dollar amounts that we're bound to, so that's a point of negotiation. So I wouldn't anticipate this needing to be rehashed annually in the sense that if there's no, I mean, programs run, run in fine, then we just sign. I mean, it's, it, it's not a big to-do, because, um, the amount of compensation is reciprocal, is what we're trying to get at, is that you guys are using our facilities for that. The compensation then is the watering, and that's the, that's the point of the agreement, and, and that only. And so if we're not having any issues with how our facilities are being rented, utilized, taken care of when, um, parks and recs are using our facilities, if we're not having any qualms and there's, everything's grandiose, then there's no issue.
It would be exactly the same, Mayor Hill, as what we're doing right now with the MOU for the SRO. Uh, Leon and I meet with Chief McLean every spring, and then things are running really well, and so Leon brings to you the MOU for you guys to approve, and I do the same with the board, and then we move on. So if there's not, that this conversation doesn't happen around that MOU, I would anticipate it would be the same.
Yeah, and then if we were to do just a facilities agreement, that likely include the facilities that the city does for the school district as well as part of this, because we also do like Cooper Field and Majestic Park for softball and stuff like that. It's a facility, not in this particular one, but if we're gonna try to keep things the same, I think facilities, facilities and water, um, I don't have, I think that'd be fine.
Well, on the facilities, the problem with that is we have all these sports teams now that are above and beyond sports, I mean, the high school sports. We have all these elite teams, and they're already having trouble finding facilities even at practice in. And so, you know, my biggest thing is, any Lakeland elite team has priority that has to, because that's how we get better, that's how we, you know, have pride in our community, you know? And some of the language in here about you guys, that the city does the scheduling, and the city has priority, you know, I mean, I, I think you guys need to use our facilities, but we need to figure out a better way to schedule it and stuff. Because right now, it's through parks and recs, and from my understanding, the city went in there and blanketed every school, scheduled everything, so there's no room for our elite teams now.
Okay, but the, but the school district in both agreements, the old agreement and the one that we're providing, has priority, right? So I think...
Yeah, but it does, in the, in this one, it says, where's it at?
Can you tell me the section? Well, I was gonna say, the issue that I have, I think it's one E, right, on page two?
Priority of use?
Yeah, priority of use, and I, the, the issue I have with, with this version, honestly, is that it sounds like the city's trying to tell the school district what you can and can't do, what your uses are.
Right.
Right, and that's, that's, honestly, I don't think that's for us to tell.
Right.
Um, but at the same time, um, you know, I can definitely tell you, when we're talking about the good of the community and, and answering the people in the city,
Right.
the people in the city don't see elite sports teams as beneficial to the community as a whole, whether they are or not. Especially since they are elite sports teams, where they are, are exclusive in nature. They don't include the community as a whole. In a lot of cases, a lot of those teams are bringing kids in from other communities. So although it's the larger community, I understand what you're saying. On the other hand, the people in Rathrum don't necessarily agree with what you're saying.
Right.
So for that use, but again, I don't think we should be telling you what the school district's use of those facilities is, and it's not...
Especially if you just break it up, you know?
Well, I think that that was, I think that's where, where our concern originally came from, was that wording of that priority, just exactly what you're talking about. Um, so I think that that was very off-putting to us, that...
Doesn't this say, though, that, um, that the district has priority?
It does, it does, the very first part. But then it also says that...
Shall be given priority for, the city shall be given priority for use of facilities located within Rathrum and not being utilized by the district. So that's giving you guys, um...
For all facilities except for the gym space located at Betty Kiefer and Lakeland High School.
Yeah, we wanted to exclude those, so we wouldn't even ask for those facilities at all, period.
Right.
So those would be two facilities that would be, and I know the, the high school is constantly booked. It's, there's, there's, it's almost unusable by anybody else by the school district, because there's so many activities that the high school does.
The problem with the, the, the elite teams that we're calling them, okay, let's take, take the wrestling, okay? Do you know how much money they put into this community, or into our schools? They bought us seven mats, seven mats, in the last ten years, okay? We, you know, they, they come up with, they help us travel, and that's all the sports teams that help do that, because we always don't have the money to go do things, and they, they give it to us, you know?
Well, Lakeland Junior Tackle just completely redid the field for the junior high, or middle school.
They're not sitting back and not giving back.
Are there, are there contention from the city on those activities at all?
What do you mean?
Do, I mean, is the city reserving those facilities, the wrestling rooms, the, the...
No, no, but some of the language in here is like, you know, people were worried that the city would go, well, we want it, we want that room. And it's like, no, you don't have priority over our club teams, you know? Because they, they put in as much time and effort as we do to make the teams better. And that's, I think that's where this...
Agreement with us, so the intention of the language was not that. It sounds like now that they reread it, that they're agreeing that, no, that's not what we were intending, so that's good to hear.
Right. I think, I, I mean, there's gotta be a way we can mix it up, you know? With parks and recs on Wednesdays and Fridays, or what, I don't know, something like that, you know, anything, we can figure it out.
Because there is another, you know, even though we're at the, you know, the Lakeland District, but we do have another, um, group of students that don't maybe come here full-time, that do utilize the parks and recs for activities too. So, yeah, it's sort of a, a catchy thing to be able to, you know, make sure everybody's involved, but...
So we could use the three groups of people trying to get gym space. The, the district, the club teams, and the park and rec.
Right.
The club teams were an issue in two thousand eight.
Right. They didn't even understand that.
They weren't, yeah.
So this is more of a recent thing that I'm saying, that we're trying to, and I know a lot of our kids do the club team.
We could do it like the, for the kids. We could do it just like the elite teams, so they don't have to pay fees. If they're seventy-five percent Lakeland students, they don't have to pay any fees.
That's a policy.
That is a policy, yeah.
So, I mean, something like that, you know?
The teams that don't have seventy-five percent, they do pay fees, so...
And our club teams actually pay fees when they're using our facilities to run a tournament, because then 75% of people participating are not, are not kids, so they do pay. I, I just want to throw this out there, just because maybe this isn't quite as big of an issue as that. I think we need to figure out how to get the scheduling done, but Eric is here, and I don't believe we have issues during fall season with regard to facilities because Park and Rec isn't really running indoor activities in the fall. We're doing soccer and football and are we doing volleyball?
We do fall volleyball.
Okay, but we aren't having issues with, right, we don't have issues with the scheduling that as much as we do in the winter when we have boys and girls basketball happening at both the high school and the middle school, and then you're running your basketball program.
Right.
Because, and we also don't have the issue in the spring, right, with facilities, because again, we're outside using fields instead.
That's correct, and we do have volleyball in the spring as well.
But we don't run any indoor in the spring, we're not running any indoor spaces.
Weather-wise, you're in there, just trying to practice baseball because there's still snow on the ground, but typically in the spring, there's, there's not an issue.
So it's really our winter months that we, we just need to figure out how you want that to be scheduled so that there is some opportunity for the club teams to get scheduled, Park and Rec can get scheduled. It's really the winter season that we struggle with.
Is it just basketball that's being scheduled in the winter, or are there other sports?
Uh, so it's primarily just basketball and volleyball is what we use the school facilities for, the gyms.
But not volleyball in winter time, it's just basketball?
Volleyball is ball in the springs and not winter. Winter time is primarily basketball.
And we, sorry, no, I'm sorry, um, we don't use all the schools because they're not all gyms. They don't have gym floors, they have carpet, right?
Correct.
So we don't use those schools, right?
That's not true.
So we use those for practices.
Okay.
And then only all of our games at the, at the middle school.
And Mountain View?
At Mountain View.
We give away some games at Mountain View because it's hardwood floor.
Right.
Right.
We've kind of got away from, we used to do adult basketball tournaments at the high school, but we haven't used the high school for a couple of years, we've kind of got away from that, so.
And then if you don't mind, Eric, about how many teams do we average per year in basketball? And how often do they practice, and how often do they have games?
So I just pulled the data from the last two years, which kind of gives us a good idea. We have, in '22, we had a total of 31 teams, and then this year we had a total, or I'm sorry, '23, we had a total of 35 teams. But keep in mind, our K through fourth graders play a season, and then when they're done, then our fifth through eighth graders come into class, but not all playing at the same time.
And that's basketball.
That's basketball.
And how many kids are on team?
Uh, eight to 10 kids for basketball.
Do they practice twice a week and then play on Saturday once a week?
So our, our second graders and second through fourth grade, we, we recommend one practice a week. Fifth through eighth, we try to get them two practices a week. I mean, we could just give them a practice a week, we talked about cutting back because of the lack of gym space. So our older kids, we try to get them two practices, younger kids, we recommend one practice a week and a game on Saturday, so.
So does one team take the entire middle school gym to practice?
Yes, they, we've cut, we cut back this last year to a 45-minute practice, we used to practice for an hour.
What if the gym were split, not court-wise, but?
We've talked about doing that possibly, as, you know, the space gets a little more limited, maybe have two teams practicing at the same time, and then maybe use the last half-hour practice as a supplement or something, so.
It seemed like when my kids were playing basketball, there was always other teams in there, at least one other team, so.
I think it's important for our community and for our kids that that, I think we're all on the same page, Park and Rec is a really important part of what we do for kids. The club teams give kids opportunities to play at a much higher level than we have our own school teams. So I, I think if you guys can kind of just agree to some like guidance in here as to how you want us to schedule, I think we can get it figured out, and Jimmy and Eric have talked, Mr. Hoffman and Eric have talked about, especially in winter time, just sitting down with Rebecca, with facilities getting later open to schedule together, so that we're making sure that the elite teams are getting some time and that Park and Rec is getting time also, so.
Well, if you guys had two days, let's say you guys had two days a week and you had all the gyms, right? Would that cover it, you think, or what, how many days do you think?
Does wrestling practice every day, five days a week?
No.
They don't wrestle five days?
No, two nights. Club only goes two nights.
No, I'm talking about school, I'm talking about the high school.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So does basketball, and basketball has C-team varsity and JV, boys and girls.
Right.
So that's a lot.
Yeah, I know.
To, to give up our gyms.
No, I'm not saying give them up, I'm just saying like, because the high school kids are gonna go right after school, usually.
So one of the things, one of the things I'd like to point out that I'm concerned about is that comment kind of leaps into, that very first part of that says the district shall have priority in the use of the district's facilities. We're not saying you don't have priority over the school.
Yeah, no, I, I under, I understand that, I'm just, if, it was just the, the comment about two days a week, it's.
In the last part of that.
It's so tight already for our high school teams alone to even use our own gyms, and then to add on the parks and the.
Well, I'm sorry, that says.
So hard to.
The exempted facilities, which said exempted facilities can offer, offer to others for reservations, the district's full discretion. If no one else has booked, these exempted facilities. So everybody's agreeing that Betty Kiefer and Lakeland High School is something that's exempted from the city, the city can't gain access to that for the children. And I'd like to point out that the Parks and Recs for Rafterham is encompassing of everybody, elite teams don't. My son played on, on elite team for a while, and they're elites, they, it's a very small group of people compared to a very large group of people that actually feed into your exempt team. So if you cut the legs out of underneath the, the people that are coming up to do the exemption, is that just gonna fall apart, and all we'll have is people from other areas coming in versus Rafterham children having that opportunity to come up?
I don't wanna take.
I'm not sure of that balance, but.
I don't wanna take anything away from Parks and Rec, I'm just trying to figure out the best way to do this.
Oh.
So let me, let me ask you a question, these elite teams, I'm, I'm not familiar with them.
Yeah.
But when I, I played, you know, serious baseball in high school, and I was on elite teams.
Right.
But we were encompassed by a lot of people, and they weren't school organized groups.
Right.
Are these elite teams part of the school district supply, you know, supported by the school, paid for by the school?
No.
These are extracurricular teams that are not part of the school district?
Usually it's a coach.
I realize they're students and stuff, but I'm asking, you understand the logic of my question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, please clarify that.
You'll have the high school coach coaching on a elite team.
Right, okay.
Like.
But they're not.
The head baseball coach will be starting a, a elite team this year, you know? Because he wants his kids to get better and have opportunities to get better.
Which is great.
Yeah, and I don't wanna take nothing away from the Parks and Rec.
No, no, but we, but my, my question is, is that, yeah, I'm, I'm feeling like these elite teams are gonna be getting put in front of our Parks and Rec.
Right.
Okay, and they're not part of the school district, they're not funded by the school, although the high school coach is coaching them.
But they also help support the high school.
I understand that, I understand that, so does the city, or all of our city residents do. I think we're losing our focus here in one thing. I used to coach a lot of little league back in my younger days.
Right.
And I struggled because dads would come up and go, my son's better than him, why isn't he playing? And I go, because I'm here to teach these kids fundamentals, teach them sportsmanship. You know, I'm not gonna win every game, I might lose games because I might put a lesser player in, but he deserves to play. So this is a teaching, also part of our, our Parks and Rec is to teach fundamentals and teach principles and teach values to these kids.
Right.
And we got volunteer coaches and things, so we're kind of hand in hand here, so I'm, I'm, I'm just asking for a balance with the elite teams. I understand wrestling and the baseball and the basketball, school, the high school basketball team.
But when we're hearing that our more competitive teams at the high school level have to go rent gyms in post-falls because they can't, because everything here is being utilized by Park and Rec, that's a frustration because we're now, that shouldn't happen. And I mean, our high school is doing a phenomenal job, we're expanding, we're hopefully gonna be erecting something totally cool. But, you know, we see the space problem, but we have to find a way to balance it so that Park and Rec isn't feeling slighted, and our competitive teams aren't going to post-falls to have to try and get a practice in. That just doesn't seem viable for the community at all, anywhere.
Well, and I understand, post-falls has a lot of money over there, there's a lot of organizations that have built gyms for that, like Twin Lakes and, and they went out there on Prairie and things, and they, they utilize those. How many, how many gyms do we have here in, in Rafterham? You got Betty Kiefer, you got the high school.
Two, three, four, two, three, four.
Garwood.
Six.
Garwood, Twin Lakes, and now.
In town, there's six in town.
Okay.
Which would affect, would be the Parks and Rec?
But they also, Park and Rec also uses Garwood and Twin Lakes technically.
Okay, we're not in the city limits, okay.
Yeah, so, and this refers directly to located within Rafterham.
Is that something that's, that's an option? Is, is Park and Rec able to utilize gyms that are not in the city of Rafterham?
They currently aren't.
We use Garwood.
So I'm asking, is that part of the solution then?
They've always utilized outside.
They always practice there.
Yeah.
For basketball.
Is it, oh, so I guess this is maybe, maybe the question should be more directed at schools, that is it the, is it only the the schools within the city of Rafterham that you guys are struggling with gym space?
I don't think so.
I don't think, not utilizing particularly the two schools outside the city limits here that, that actually service kids within the greater Rafterham community, I think that's appropriate to have that. You know, the other way to look at it is the schools have kids who come in from outside the city, and we have taxpayers from outside the city who are supporting those facilities and programs and so on and so forth. So that's a part of the kind of quid pro quo that needs to happen, at least from our point of view, with the greater community.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm, I guess, asking is that if you have six gyms within the city of Rafterham that are being utilized by Park and Rec, and there are two gyms.
Well, no, two, two of them are not being utilized because you guys don't use Lakeland High School gyms, so.
Yes, apparently we're only utilizing four films.
Okay, and we don't, we don't wanna use the other two, right? You guys are wanting to maintain that exclusiveness.
Well, one of them is Lakeland High School, and you're already not using that one.
Right, but you guys are wanting to maintain that.
Yeah, there, yeah, there's no time for anybody to use Lakeland High School.
And so my question is that when you, when you have capacity issue, you, to increase capacity, you increase your facilities. And so if there are two other facilities that exist outside of the city of Rafterham, are those eligible to be utilized? Does that solve the issue?
No, you're already using them.
That already part of the agreement.
Even though it says located within Rafterham, it actually not just located within Rafterham. Because it's Garwood and Twin Lakes too.
What are the facilities like at K-Tech? I don't believe there's a gym or anything like that out there.
Gym per se, no, there's, there's an interior area there that's pretty large.
It's huge, yeah.
Yeah, when you walk into the common area, but I don't know if they can put a basketball.
Well, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering though, because we're busting at the seams and Lakeland pays a very large amount of money to K-Tech, that we, we're obviously running out of room, we're not gonna go back to a point to where we're not gonna need the room. Maybe that's something we need to look at, you know? What, would it take, we're just talking practice, would basketball, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't know, something for Park and Recs or something, I mean, if the space is there. Yeah, I'd like to go and look at that space, but it seems like there are like bookshelves, like it's a, it's not, it's not just a big open space, it's, it's.
It's got a table.
This could possibly do with volleyball here or something.
I'm just thinking, it sounds like practice is the biggest issue, and if there's another, that's the only other thing I can think of that where there's large building, you know? And I see next to it, and I see next to what's over there. I haven't been in the Park and Rec centers.
Oh, they don't have a space.
They don't have a.
Yeah, they have industrial.
So when, when we met with, when Rebecca and I met with Jimmy Hoffman and Kelsey Badger, because those are our two coaches for the, the two, two of the elite teams that I can think of. They both felt like if we could figure out how to do the scheduling, that we can figure out how to get everybody in. What, what's happening is because of the old MOU, Park and Rec is just signing up for everything because they don't know how many teams they're going to have, and they don't know how many times their, their primary practices, then, how, how the games are gonna roll out. So once they get that dialed in, then they, they do go back to Rebecca and say, okay, we don't need these days. But that's, that's what's become problematic is our, then the other teams are waiting until they kind of have that figured out. So there has been conversation about just jointly sitting down with Rebecca and, and scheduling it together so that Jimmy and Kelsey both felt like we could meet the needs of, of those two, at least now, because we have two teams. Now that could change if we end up with more, but we only have two. So we could try that and see if we can, if that solves that issue. Because I think you guys are kind of in alignment with everything else, it really is just about the facilities and how do we get them scheduled.
I'm curious your thoughts on that, Eric, do you think it could be?
I think so, and that's kind of the process that happens, is they suggest that we block out all of our times at the beginning of the year because of the time zones, if we don't, and other teams come in and sign up, we've lost those dates. So we try to block everything out at the beginning of the year, and then we try to do the best job that we can. Once we find out the times and dates that we won't need the gyms, then we contact the school and say, you can open those back up. We don't need to block them out anymore. But until we know how many teams we have, we really, we need to keep the, the day through Friday and the Saturdays, just so we know we're gonna have enough gym space for our programs.
So all, all of the seasons are preset, I mean, they don't really vary that much, so, you know? Like, I guess my question is, why doesn't the school district, it, it's more overhead, understandably, just before the seasons meet all the stakeholders and go, we're scheduling for this season, versus, hey, at the beginning of the year, just take everything. Because it seems like you've kind of set yourself up into a situation where you're causing this to happen.
I think the problem is we have wrestling and basketball going at the same time. There's so many kids that, that wrestle and play basketball, and there's only so many gyms, so.
I thought the wrestling was being done in the, in the room up above the gym.
It is, no.
So wrestling's not an issue.
But it is, you don't do your matches up there, you just, yeah, just the practices.
So we've got, I know the junior high last year, they had seventh grade A, B, and C teams, they had the C teams last year. So, I mean, there's just so many more kids, and it's just.
It's a great problem to have, but, yeah.
Well, in response to your comment about, well, it seems like the district is setting themselves up for this, that's not how, we, we came back to this because we were saying, no, you can't do that anymore. You can't just blanket across, that's not equitable for everyone.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the solution be to meet more often and do it more granularly though?
Yeah, that's.
I guess that's my confusion.
That's what Lisa was requesting.
Yeah, which makes perfect sense to me.
We, Eric, oh, too.
So we, we.
Not us, not all of us.
What we had talked about is.
Oh, come on, this is fun.
Eric.
I agree.
Our, 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 um, club teams, coaches, and Rebecca, who manages all of the facilities, cleaning up the stuff, that we would meet in July or August to schedule the fall season, which isn't a big deal really, because Park and Rec, for the most part, uses our outdoor fields to play soccer, and they're not really, except for volleyball, they're not really in the building, so fall's not a big deal. And then we could, then we talked about meeting like in October to plan the winter season and schedule those games and practices for basketball, which is. and practices for basketball, which is the season that will probably take us a little bit longer to work that out just because there are a lot more kids playing indoors because of the weather. And then spring is really a non-issue because we don't have any indoor, um, things going on unless they're running cross, or running track, you know, in the gym because it's raining outside for practice, but, but everything's outside for us.
Are we making the most efficient use of the time in the gym that like scheduling it back to back and, and things like that, or is there waste that could be eliminated?
We run three sets of practices, so we're in there as early as we can be and we're in there pretty much as late as.
And I hear, I don't hear Sunday being utilized.
Sunday? Yeah, I don't, we typically don't do any programs on Sundays.
Is there availability there? Does that help?
I'm not even sure if the school would be available.
My question would be, how to encourage that?
Yeah. We, we, we've never done programs on Sundays. It's just.
Can I ask an out of the box thinking, thinking question? Recognizing that we have fall and spring and our, our programs are not inside. Does Park and Rec basketball have to be during the winter time or could we, could you move Park and Rec basketball to fall or spring? Because then you have ample.
Are you only playing, um, yourself or do you have other jurisdictions that are participating in tournaments? But I mean, it seems like basketball has a specific season.
Right. We interleague with Spirit Lake and occasionally with Post Falls. Especially our older kids will interleague with Post Falls, like our seventh and eighth graders.
So is this a problem that you're having in Spirit Lake as well?
I don't know that. I think Mitzi said that she's having issues getting gym space up there.
They, they don't have, but in Spirit Lake, it'll have to be.
Is, is that a viable, a viable solution?
To move seasons? Well, we moved our football program to the summer, um, so it doesn't interfere with soccer. I have to think about that, moving basketball to the spring.
I think it'll have a monetary impact as well because I know a lot of the, you know, the city staff that officiates both sports. Now, now they're gonna be overlapping each other, so now we're gonna have to bring more people in to fill those gaps.
But I think there's a.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think, I, I know from my own household, uh, my kiddos play soccer and basketball. So I don't know too many parents with littles that wanna be juggling multiple sports, one on top of the other at the same time.
And with our staff needs. They basically have to use our entire staff for the projects that are currently going on. So you would double up staff needs in, say, the fall, and then in the wintertime, you would have no staff needs. Snowplow drivers.
Yeah, yeah, ask your snowplow drivers. I dare you. I dare you.
No, you stay out of this.
Did you think about that? I just, I'm not sure if that would work out.
It just wouldn't be the same, as it's apparent.
Yeah. The ball play park and rec, separate the, the non-elite gym.
Your butt off. I have a suggestion, but I don't wanna utter it, um, before consulting with Eric and Leon. Can I have a minute? You guys want mine for just a second?
We're back from our impromptu break.
So, um, one of the items that I, I wanted to add, probably the old agreement that we have in terms of providing that was the use of district facilities. It seemed like the spirit of the agreement at that point was whatever the school district gave you and if we just go straight to the city of Rafter, it's Park and Rec. And then in this document noted that the new one, Lakeland High School and Beddickiefer Elementary School had been, um, kind of nixed off that list of items, even though this document was in force at that time. And one of my concerns is we talked about the elite teams. Um, so how many elite teams do we have that are using the facilities?
Basketball, volleyball.
But I mean, ten, fifteen? And when that happens, when it, when it doubles because our population goes up and you can only have so many kids on one team. Are, is it, where's the, where's that push? When it's twenty though, where's that push? Where does that end up being around?
Well, I think they just, they get more teams at the, you know, we started the lead basketball. I don't know how many teams they have. I think they have six teams now. Cause every grade is getting, you know.
So my point is, it said, back in the day.
There wasn't a lot.
There wasn't anything going on, so bathroom had that opportunity. So as we push forward, maybe it is best in two years, school district are gonna come back and say, they all have priority over top of the city. That's what we want. That's my concern. Because that's what you guys are actually saying, is that we want the, these super teams to push out the city and use those facilities and that's how you see it. I don't wanna be super negative on this, but I don't, the trend line is that direction and.
Well, I'm sorry that you feel that way. I don't think that's the intention at all from anyone on this board. The frustration, um, as a board member, I mean, we are doing, trying to do our due diligence as far as building relationship and maintaining relationship and rebuilding the relationship with the city. I know for a while there it had gotten, um, very soured. But learning, I mean, granted, we didn't know about this until we're getting bombarded with, you know, we've got this other section of competitive teams that are Lakeland kids that can't use Lakeland buildings. So when we learned that, well, Park and Rec just comes in and takes everything until they learn what they don't need, that is not, at least in my opinion, effective management of facilities. It sounds like we're working in the direction of getting control on that and that's not going to be how we're gonna be moving forward. I, you know, I had kids that were in Park and Rec and grew through that and played competitive ball. So I had to take my kids out of Rafter community because competitive ball for them wasn't here. We had to go elsewhere. But I don't want my Lakeland kids having to go to other communities when we can find a viable solution for everyone involved. I don't think it's the intention of anyone on this board to bump or push out Park and Recreation. Those are our starter teams. And that program, you guys have done awesome with your Park and Rec's directors, that they've grown that program. Cause I remember when my kids were littles and they were in that program and there wasn't a lot and it all worked. But everything is growing and I don't know if, what I hear you saying is you think you, you wanna put some language in here that says Park and Rec's never gonna be ousted. I don't think that's the intention of anyone on this board because that doesn't benefit our kiddos, our, our students. It doesn't benefit our community. It doesn't benefit our relationship. That, that would be terrible.
Do you see the school district actually coming back to saying to elite teams, sorry, we've got enough to stop the, we've got kids, our programs are growing because we have a growing population. You're saying that you guys are gonna have to be fenced in. Are you willing to say to those elite teams, sorry, we're gonna fence you in, guys, you can't grow anymore? We only got just so many facilities. You only got just so much.
Well, we don't have, we don't have agreements with those elite facility or those elite organizations, the competitive teams. We don't have agreements with them. We have an agreement with the city, which has always taken precedence over everything else. And it's taken, it's grown to the point where that precedence is becoming a negative and we don't want it to. We wanna maintain our relationship with the city. We want your Park and Rec's program to continue to grow. We want to be able to meet everyone's needs. We are turning competitive teams away because we can't help them when Park and Rec is, is, uh, got universal control over all of our gyms.
Yeah, and I don't think what you're talking about is specific to the agreement itself. It's to the administration of what's, what this outlines.
Correct.
So, so that's really kind of out of scope for this. And it, and it does sound like the district and the city go, you know, we wanna solve the problem.
Right, absolutely.
So, and, and, you know, I don't wanna get in a position where we're trying to solve world peace here either.
Yeah, please don't.
Belaboring it, right, um, too much. I think, you know, and, and I think Neil took a good point, you know, and to the point that I made earlier about, you know, I don't think the city should be dictating in the MOU what the district's uses for their facilities should be, right? But, but to Neil's point, I, and I don't wanna speak for Emily, but I kinda am here, or whoever drafted this particular section. It sounds like that's what we're trying to protect against, is that, you know, having the school district go, well, you know, we're seeing a, a more tangible benefit from the elite teams than we are from the deal with the city. We're gonna give them the precedence.
Well, I think that the same thing that Neil said, the school district could also say, that as our population continues to grow, so does our Park and Rec program. And as we continue to grow our Parks and Rec's program, our utilization of your guys' facilities continues to increase. And as that continues to occur, the, the opportunities for those elite clubs continues to diminish. And the, the two thousand and eight agreement didn't have any elite clubs to compete with. But it, it still acknowledged that the school district's facilities are the school district's facilities and that you guys have first priority over them. The idea that I had and I wanna discuss with Leon and Eric before I dare utter it, is a cap. That, um, we suggested a cap on the water rate, um, that we take the highest month and we apply that across. And when we go over that, that there's fees that are associated with that. And that agreement is consistent with how we have other agreements with other water users. Perhaps a similar system could be employed in the utilization of the gyms. If there was a cap as to what it is that the city is allowed to, uh, to, uh, exercise, you know, how many it is that we have, um, and when we exceed that limit, then we pay a fee, um, the same fee that you guys charge to anyone else. And I'm not sure that that's really solving the problem. I really like Lisa's idea of, um, we're, we're dealing with a scheduling problem. And so are there other things that can be, can this problem be solved by moving that somewhere else? That seems like a really smart idea of, um, how to solve this problem. The, um, I'm curious about the number of district teams that are utilizing the gyms versus the number of, um, Park and Rec teams versus the number of, um, elite teams that are, that are all competing for the same space. And if you were to say that, okay, there's, uh, ten, uh, school district teams, there's thirty, um, Park and Rec teams and there's fifteen, um, elite teams, whatever it is, take the percentage of, uh, what each of those bodies make up and divvy up the space in that manner, is that a solution? But, but then sets a cap that the, the, the city is provided the opportunities up to this limit. Um, and beyond that, that then we kinda enter into a different realm of things. I'm not sure, and, and like I say, I was hesitant to dare utter it, that, um, that having some kind of a, a, a ceiling, if you will, similarly to how we did on the water, um, that does that remedy the issue? And I think that it, it may, from your guys' perspective, but I think it creates a hell of a challenge on ours.
And, you know, I'm only speaking for myself, you know, our, I think our effort is to try to find a way to accommodate everybody as much as possible.
Oh, yeah, we all.
Knowing that we have finite facilities and finite time to get in and out of those facilities. But if we can do that through cooperative scheduling, then that's the best solution, I think. Uh, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily wanna put you folks in a position of saying, okay, X number of teams or X number of kids and then you're gonna pay fees beyond that. Well, who's gonna pay those fees? I mean, you know, every, if you're gonna trickle it down to, to players or the families, you know, I don't wanna go there. Because I think, you know, our, our obligation jointly is to our community and to do everything we can to accommodate the community in every, every way that we can. So I don't think we'd find a better solution than I'm.
So I have a, I have a question. These elite teams that we're talking about, are these more high school age? Do you have like fifth graders that are playing?
They're starting younger now.
Right now.
It's like, it's like cheer and junior tackle, right? So it was junior tackle, and then they started cheer. Now there's hundreds of cheerleaders.
More cheerleaders on the field.
And they're, you know, they're outside right now because it's nice.
Well, I have a reason for that question. My thoughts were, could we schedule those older students to play later in the evening? Like eight o'clock or something and utilize the gym a little bit later in the day? Or maybe, cause you have your high school coaches coaching a lot of those, maybe they could come in on a Sunday.
Right.
And play or practice or whatever and adjust their times around because they're probably way more flexible than we are as a city with our little leagues and stuff.
Right, well, even, even right after school, if we had a coach who's coaching, um, that isn't always as easy for parents who are coaching because they're, they have to come after work. So that's why I think, and that's been our conversation, is if we can just sit down together and we know how many teams we have to get in and, and how many games we're scheduling and practices, we can look at all of those variables. I, I do think we can get to a place where we can, um, make it work. And then, you know, obviously if we get stuck, we'll, we'll each come back to our respective, uh, governing bodies and just kind of give an update that we, we finally hit that ceiling where we have enough teams in all of the different programs that are happening and we're out of gym space. I mean, at some point, that's going to be our reality.
One of the, and I haven't been in a gym, so this is kind of a dumb question, but when I was in school, we had, in our gymnasium, we had a basketball hoop on each end and then we had two hoops on each side. And so you would cut the gym in half and then we would play in a, in a more condensed area.
At our elevators, we do that.
So you could, you could feasibly with the younger kids especially, condense it down to a little bit smaller, little bit smaller basketball court and make two practices at one time might benefit too. What do you, what do you think about that?
Yeah, that's absolutely possible. Older kids, fifth and sixth graders, and definitely the seventh grade, create a good start. Though with the kindergarten through fourth graders, that is entirely possible to do.
Yeah, and that would double your number of, yeah.
In some cases, yeah. Food for thought.
And maybe it's a, you know, the way it's written, that, that blanket of the city saying, okay, these are the, and maybe we just figure out how many gym hours there are available or needed and kind of proportion that, proportion it out in that way, that.
Another, another factor that we have to keep in, but under consideration is the facilities have to be cleaned and maintained and all that kind of stuff. That takes some time, you know? We don't necessarily want somebody there at three o'clock in the morning cleaning gymnasium, so. You know, that, that's, it's another piece of puzzle that has to be remembered.
Cleaned and ready for kiddos.
I think the, 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 like, the teams out by eight P M. in the evening, so they get their stuff done. That's, you're right, that's.
If we can extend that by forty-five minutes, would that help? Instead of eight, nine, is that possible?
Can we just adjust their, uh, can we just adjust their start times?
Well, I think doubling up in, in some of those gyms is a really good suggestion if that's not being done. Particularly for little kids, they don't need a full court press.
Right.
Not for practice, for sure, yeah.
I think it is full courts.
It's pretty close.
Close, it's, it's close.
Depends on the gym that you're talking about.
And, and even the older kids could, could function there and at least work on their fundamentals and, you know, things like that, you know? They'd be limited to some of the things they could do, but they could work on the basics anyway, so. Have practice.
Have your shooting practice be on, on those nights where you might have to share a gym, but then you get the full gym on another night and that's when you do your running and running curls.
I hate to say buy something, but I know there's partitions that go down the little gyms.
The curtain type thing.
The curtains, they're up in the Spokane Valley one. And that's just a big room and those little curtains all over the place. That would help.
Is that something the school?
It is not in our budget, just so that we're clear.
They're already tight.
We tried to give one for the basketball room and it was a hundred thousand dollars.
And that's for the wrestling room, not for a size gym.
We just wanted a curtain to come down and called good. It was a hundred thousand dollars.
I left my checkbook at home, so.
My checkbook is broke.
Kelsey, the only concern would be timing because if we're red, tailing the registration and we're ready to start scheduling practices, where are those other eight?
and we're ready to start scheduling practices, where are those other elite teams at as far as practice, practices that they need? So it all kind of ties in, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think we just have to find out what, what makes the most sense for each of those three seasons. And then we just get it on the calendar so that it's ahead of when people actually are going to get in the gym and practice.
Yeah, it just gets tricky because we have a registration period, and then as soon as the registration period ends, then we kind of go right in to start scheduling practices. So there's just not a whole lot of time there, so we just have to.
I think we would schedule even before the registration period starts so that we have it dialed in before you get to that. And I, I'm pretty sure Kelsey and Jimmy know how many teams they have and what they will need, so.
So Eric, I have a question for you about that. So I hate to see this, and I hate, I would hate it to be an option, but you, you said we had 31 teams in 20, and then 35 in 23, I think you said?
Yes.
Yeah.
So knowing that ahead of time, is there a way that you can just say, I gotta cap it at 30 teams, or I gotta cap it at 35 teams? You hate to turn away kids, but on the same token, there's only so many pieces of the pie that we can work with. So we're, you know, is that something that, that you hate to do, but is that something you might have to do? What do you think on that?
Well, yeah, we never like to turn kids away, but.
Make bigger teams, maybe?
Kind of where we have more facilities. I mean, that's only a reality that we're gonna have.
Would it be possible to go at this sort of backwards way in a sense of saying, okay, if I have 40 teams, this is how much gym space I will need to see if we could accommodate that? So that when you are getting registrations, you're not having to go, okay, well, I know I can only do up to 35 and shut it off. If we be a little bit more proactive in the sense of saying, what's the maximum? Okay, can we, can we hold 50 teams? So that you, you know where your boundaries are, and the district knows what to expect. Because I don't want to turn kids away. Park and Rec is a, is a very valuable program within the community for all kids.
But isn't that getting us back to where we're at right now, is where if we're trying to accommodate 40, 50 teams for Park and Rec, and you guys are trying to provide gym space for elite teams?
I don't believe so. What, what was my, I guess, point of contention and frustration is this whole blanket slate that nobody else has any consideration except Park and Rec. And we have collaboratively discovered that we're not going to keep walking on that pathway. For Park and Rec, with that always being, which has always been more of a priority for the district, if there's boundaries there and we understand what those boundaries are, I want to set the boundaries up so he's not turning kids away. But we also, as a district, need to know, can we handle that many? So I think if we took a preventative measure before we need to actually sit down and iron out what schools, what days, we need to see what would that look like before we get there. So that we know if we get there, this is how we can budget it on the calendar, at least in my opinion.
So Eric, on those teams, let's say a basketball team, what's the common denominator of how many kids are on a team?
Eight to 10. And when we're putting rosters together, we get a total number of kids, and then we start dividing them out. We try to keep about 10 kids on a team. The younger kids, a little less. So that's kind of where, because if we have too many kids on the team, then it's, it's kind of a problem for the coach, because you're trying to manage 10 kids, a lot of kids.
I mean.
And then kids don't get a lot of playing time, so we try to keep teams to, you know, eight kids on the younger teams and 10 kids on the older teams.
10, 10's good for basketball. You basically got two teams.
Yeah, and there's always a week where, you know, a kid or two is not gonna make a good game, so.
Right, right. Okay, good question.
And not all the kids attend all the practices. I know when I coached volleyball, you'd have 22 kids and you'd still barely have enough kids to play one side of offense and one side of defense, never enough to play the full team on either side. Just because there's so many things going on in life that not everybody can show up at practices. So sometimes you don't have even five kids to play on that.
There's one other little aspect. I just noticed there's a paragraph in here that talks about potentially the city having, other than recreational uses, in other words, for police training or some other community. We have some of the same issues, and we need to make sure that, you know, fair understanding that if we have a community use request for the facility, that that will take a priority over recreational uses. In other words, for example, we've, we've conducted funerals in the high school gymnasium. If you get that kind of a request, that's going to preclude other kinds of things. So just want to throw that one out there.
Sure.
How is a community request? That's how you order? It's a community request, which you won't order there?
Yeah, I don't know. They sort of, you see those come and go from time to time. But, or we have a booster club that's gonna have an activity, you know, they do fundraising activities. And we have PTOs that have organized activities within the schools and those kinds of things.
Those kinds of things happen.
They're associated with the school.
And sometimes we don't know what those dates are.
Ahead of time.
Ahead of time. And Eric and his crew are, are really good to, they're flexible when it comes to that kind of stuff. That happens.
How many adult teams do you have? Do you don't have any adult seasons that are?
Do you know the adult programs we do right now or softball? We kind of got away from, you know, the adult basketball.
Bob, I'm kind of curious on that recreation being, one point to view, if a community request or a youth club, that type of being a recreational, would you do that simultaneously at school? Does school have a basketball game? Sorry, community event, we go over the top of it? Your district, your planned district events, would you imagine, is that, would that happen with those?
Probably not. In other words, you know, we're generally talking about non-school uses of our facilities, whether it be Park and Rec or elite teams or community organization or whatever. Our school organized activities always take first place.
Yeah.
So I have a question on that. So we, we have the veteran recognition ceremony that we do at high school that's already been reapproved. So you're not saying if a community event came in and would take precedence, we'll do that? Like you would get one?
Well, you, what I think I heard you described would be a community activity.
Oh, yeah, but it's a city community activity.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, unless it were something that were, how would I describe it? Once again, a, an activity that requires a certain time period, and the importance of that activity is so great that it would overpower. But I, you know, I don't visualize that kind of thing happening very often. But I think we need to understand that there are other organized activities that come out of the community or come out of our parent teacher organizations or that kind of thing, that we have to accommodate as well. Again, it's a, you know, finite space, and we're trying to cram all these things into it on some sort of priority basis and still be fair.
Law of physics.
Yep.
So one takeaway that I have from this is the possibility of splitting the gym. I'm curious about what that would cost. What are, what are the viable options? What are the cost effective options? And is that something that's?
Are you, is the city offering to pay for it?
We're offered to consider, so.
What do you mean splitting the gym?
Splitting the gym in half.
With a, with a curtain or a.
Oh, a curtain, oh.
It's a very important issue.
Well, if you're talking practices, it wouldn't matter. I mean, the ball goes into one accord, they just pick it up and throw it back. You know, it's, if it was a game, you know, two games going on might be a little different, but we're talking Park and Rec and Little League.
Could that be something as simple as a rope and a, you know, what do they call those things? That has a, a rope that just divides a room and stanchions?
I think for the most part, you wouldn't even need that. Most of the teams that I've seen sharing gym space, one kid runs over the line or back over is usually because the ball went rolling or something like that. It doesn't happen on a normal situation that would cause a liability issue.
No, I would think.
We do have a curtain up there to split that gym. I just didn't know we have any anywhere else.
No, most of the, most of our gyms are not designed for that sort of thing. In other words, they'll have a whole string of bleachers on one side, so, you know, you can't run a fully wall into where the bleachers already exist without picking them out and redesigning that whole situation.
But the, the gyms were constructed in a manner that they have the, they have, what, six basketball hoops?
Cross courts, yeah, they have cross courts.
Yeah. And that's what I'm talking about.
And they, yeah, they fold the bleachers back in, and then you have the two cross courts.
Right.
Timberlake Middle School. They're connected all the way across the bleachers again. You couldn't put a curtain as possible.
If you have. Well, yeah, sure, they could figure out a way. Something. And maybe the curtain, it sounds like a curtain isn't necessary anyway. So to me, that sounds like that increases the capacity of the gym, makes more efficient and effective use of the gym, and it could open it up for other utilizations. Is it possible to co, to co utilize a cross court gym in other practices? So not just Park and Rec, but if Park and Rec is using one half, can a district team or an elite team or whatever use the other half? Is there a way in scheduling to say that, you know, for this game that we need the full court and bleachers, but for, for practice, that city has this and the elite is, this is available or city is utilizing both of them? Doesn't that increase the, the capacity that you guys have available to use?
I think so.
Should be able to have four teams practice in a gym at a time. You can do a half court only.
Just shooting.
Yeah, just shooting, basic skills. You don't need a whole gym. You can do half, half.
That's fundamental. I would say, I would be comfortable with two teams at a time. I mean, four teams is a mushette for basketball.
Especially like the littler kids, you know, like the.
But, yeah, like.
Four, four, fifth, yeah.
There's not very much room for them to move. I mean.
I can see the distractions.
It's chaos.
They're not gonna hear their coach or the other coaches. It's too much.
They're gonna go see their best friends.
ADHD.
Yeah, exactly.
All of a sudden, we beat Park and Rec to this.
I, I guess, I know we're running out of time, but I don't, maybe in the MOU, we just make kind of a general statement that the, the school district, the city, and the elite teams will work together to schedule the gym space and the field space prior to each season, fall, winter, and spring. And, and, and let us try it. And if it doesn't work, we can come back and say, it worked great for fall, and it's been working great for spring. We're running a little bit of a snappy for winter, but I don't, I think we can do it. I think we can get it figured out.
Well, we already talked about coordinated scheduling.
Right.
With the entities that have need for use of this space.
Well, not like Chairman Thompson's point when I said 35 teams, and we cap it at 40 or whatever. I like that. When she said, well, what about 50? And if we manage the teams, and you do well with that, Eric, by the way, but if we manage the teams and utilize the split courts and things of that nature, and put it, put it out ahead of time, like, here's what I want to schedule and do it early instead of taking those blanket days and then giving them up later. I understand their frustration on their part of that.
Wait, do you still, yeah, do you still do it as a coaches meeting? Or, you know, I'm thinking back to when I was coaching recs off there.
Right.
Everybody would come in at the same times, all the teams, all the players, everybody would, the coaches would meet with their teams and go, here's the days that are available and the fields. And go, where do you want to be? Is, is that how you do with basketball and cup two, or?
We don't really do coach, coaches meetings anymore.
You don't do that anymore?
But.
But we're, right now, I think we're a little concerned with.
When it comes to.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay. So then coaches can say, well, man, I'd like to have a coach that night. They can go to another coach and say, hey, we treat them this night for this night or whatever.
As long as they let us know that they're coming up to you, we'd be like, yeah, whenever that. Yeah. So if the school has a mess or somebody, and that has happened where something is broken, and you know which team is in there at that time.
I didn't do it.
Nobody ever does that.
No, I don't.
Things just happen.
And they do too, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, is that A team that was in there before?
So do you know, like, so you've got, say, 35 teams, do you know how many gym hours you need for that? Like, do you have it broken down, or?
Again, it would depend on which age group we're talking. The older kids typically practice a little bit longer.
Okay.
And we try to get them two hours a week. So two hours a week for the fifth through eighth graders, and then the K through fourth graders. We just, we try to do an hour a week of practice a week. So it depends on the age group. But that's a calculation that we should be able to.
Oh, yeah, that's, that, I think that that would be a good starting point for us to know too, of, like, how many hours are we talking about?
Just this last season, so teams to practice once a week, we had 20 teams. Teams to practice twice a week, we had 15.
So that's 50 hours.
But again, those.
Across several gyms.
Yeah, they're practiced, that's two different seasons, because they're K through fourth grade plays. And then when they're done.
So they're not even all at the same time?
Yeah, we can, we can make this work. We, it's more about how we schedule than can we schedule.
It's just a growing game. That's all it is. We just did a growing game, and that's it. You know, we had to come together and talk and sort of, you know, we all love lawyers, but sometimes they're not good conversationalists.
Well, and it's just highly inefficient for, to you guys. You look over and you're like, it's good. And then we get it, and we're like, yeah, we did that so much. So just not having to send it back and forth, back and forth, back and forth is.
Plus, they don't even live here.
Yeah.
And then, you know, from, from our perspective, right, I'm sure it's the same for you guys as well. It's, it's, it's easy to look at, like, the MOU from our perspective, but this, this seems reasonable, right? But we lose all the context of exactly the things that you guys are talking about, right? Where it's like, well, hold on.
Right.
You know, how do we take this into consideration? How do we take that into consideration? So I think this is immensely beneficial.
Just talking and get to know each other and.
And respectfully, trustee Griston pointed out on page five, item number four, this is set up as a joint powers agreement. We need this to be a memorandum of understanding. We cannot, the trustees cannot create a new board. That's outside of our scope of abilities.
Yeah, the spirit of this seemed good, though. I mean, because it's doing exactly what you're asking, where it's, it's basically saying, can we, can we have delegates, right? It doesn't have to be the superintendent. It doesn't have to be the mayor. It could be, their delegate gets together once a year and just reviews this and make sure it's still working.
And we can write that in the MOU. The issue is if we're using the joint powers according to the statute, the statute requires that we have, you know, one, three, four, five, six, which includes this joint board. We can't, and it's a little overkill, in my opinion. I think our MOUs that we have with everything else has worked fine.
Right.
So the joint powers thing, I understand why they went there, but it's really not what, what we're doing, you know, what we can't do.
We won't, yeah.
Could we then just meet like we are right now and vote on stuff? Is that?
Yeah, I think we just go back and.
Would we not want to do that? I don't know. I don't know the, I don't know the legal parameters for that.
Well, we, being that we are the voted in deciding body, can pretty much decide and vote. Yay. Anyways, we can, we can, you know, chicken scratch this over. You guys can look at it, chicken scratch your piece, whatever. And then, of course, obviously, we will have legal say, you know, yay or nay. But I think we just put in writing. what we're doing, you know, what we can't do or can't.
Right.
Could we then just meet like we are right now and vote on stuff? Is that?
Yeah, I think we just go back and.
Would we not wanna do that?
Well, I think.
I don't know, I don't know the legal parameters for that, that's a question.
Well, we, being that we are the voted in deciding body, can pretty much decide and vote. Yay, anyways, we can, we can, you know, chicken scratch this over, you guys can look at it, chicken scratch your piece, whatever, and then of course, obviously, we will have legal say, you know, yay or nay, but I think we just put in writing what we all discussed this evening, you know, we need the scheduling team to get together, you know, whoever that's gonna be, we need the piece in there that says it's an agreement for, that we need to visit annually, just like the MOU with SRO. What I was not clear on, and this might have go, was the, the, oh, I guess we did call that up, the city to install the meter, pay for it, blah, blah, blah. So I think everything we talked about, we just need to write it in a MOU and we look at it and say, yeah, this is exactly what we discussed, and of course, Maria's taken focus notes there, so she'll keep this all on the right page.
Well, luckily it's being recorded, so.
And the meter, I could tell how the, the water was kind of a point of contention, and I understand so, but to clarify that again, so you, I hope you understand that, you have twelve months, in January, your water use is three hundred gallons, and in July, it's three thousand gallons, and that's the highest month, so that's your cap. And if any given month you go over those three thousand gallons, then you're billed accordingly for the overreach.
Over.
Not the whole, the whole bill. It's only for the overreach, and it's rarely, if any time ever going to happen unless you have a problem, you know, and it's minimal, and it's that way for all of us citizens in Rafterham, we have the same, same deal, we have so much water to give.
Eighth grade.
And if we go over that, we pay extra for that.
With respect to that issue, this is one time I appreciate your city attorney, because she expresses it as may bill, not necessarily shall.
City council has an opportunity.
Yeah, and that, that was intentional, because it wasn't, if we went over by a thousand gallons, just for kicks and giggles, it's sixty-five cents, it's not worth anybody's time to bill for that. If it was two million gallons over, that's a different story. And the may part is, we can use discretion, we don't have to bill for everything.
And then you guys read the meter, and the meter has a leak detector on it anyways, right?
Yes, so what, what we normally do in our normal water utility billing situation is, we read meters once a month. And, yeah, just like in any one of your other water meter things, and if the numbers are high, then we go and do a visual reread, and then we have a process to also check if there's a leak. Generally speaking, we have everybody turn off their water use for that. This particular irrigation meter is easy, you just turn one, blah, 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 right? And then you can see, okay, are, is their water still running through the meter, then we know that there's a leak. And so it, it helps everybody in knowing that it's really a benefit to all parties involved.
And we, we understand that. I made a quarrel with that. As long as the overreach doesn't exceed a certain level.
Well, and we're working on all sorts of stuff right now and trying to get things figured out.
No pun intended, but we're not gonna sub yet.
Todd was definitely into it.
So, to help our attorney, section four A, where we have the ten years, you guys want that to be revisited annually with, and this agreement shall remain in effect for a period of two years? Is that correct? Is that what you guys will do?
Well, I think the language needs to be, needs to parallel the MOU we have with.
The SRO.
The SRO agreement.
Okay.
Okay. And then, well, I guess, I know we are out of time, but the city fee waiver. What was frustrating, at least for me, is it's a, it's a nice entertainment, but there's no assurances in that whatsoever. And that was a little frustrating, because we did pay, what did we pay, Lisa, for?
Seven thousand dollars for Lincoln Middle School.
Yeah. Right, and we've got other siding projects that need to come up. You know, the language implies, implies that, you know, we might do something, but maybe we won't. In the old one, there was a twenty-five hundred dollar waiver. So I don't know if it would be worth.
It was number two of the old one.
Yes.
And that was specific to that project?
Correct, it was specific to that.
So what are you asking for now? Just a blanket, we're not gonna charge you fees?
Well, respectfully, understanding that there are some fees that have to be a pass on, if there could maybe be a dollar amount that the city would be comfortable with, knowing that we'd be willing to waive whatever for the benefit of the school district, maybe that's a consideration, because this gives no assurance of anything. It's, it's, yeah, we might consider it, but we might not, and you'll just have to deal with it, which, we're all dealing with taxpayer dollars. So if we had a dollar amount before, if there's something the city might be comfortable with in saying, we're willing to waive X number of dollars towards your permitting fees, I think that would be more easier to digest than saying, yeah, nice, nice thoughts here, but chances are we're gonna say no, 'cause that's how I'm reading it.
Would we pay for the, to give you guys land, we had to pay the survey fee?
Yeah.
Yeah, that recommance of the.
Yeah, which, I had hoped that we could split that, but based on your guidance of, apparently, your legal counsel, it was no, the district had to bear that sole cost, which seemed silly, given that, from our perspective, the fall of that deed actually not getting recorded laid on the city council, it had nothing to do with the district. But we paid it, and we didn't bop, we didn't throw tantrums, we just did it. So that's where it's kind of like, and now, you know, we like a little, we're trying to help each other out, we're, both entities deal with taxpayer dollars.
And the here and take, I think, is really important between the school district and the city, and over the years, and I've been at it since nineteen seventy-one with the city in one capacity or another, we've always had pretty good relations in terms of give and take, and we'd like to see that continue. One of the frustrations that we ran into a little long back, I know the folks at the high school were quite frustrated with what they had to go through and jumping hoops to get that little set of restrooms put on the soccer field out there.
Some of that was the state inspector, though, that was kind of.
Yeah, and so, I feel, I almost feel like some of the things that you guys are saying is directed at us, at the people that are sitting here. And the, just to clarify, the seven thousand dollars for the siding fee, none of us knew about that.
Just for some.
The restroom facility that was set on the soccer field, those of us that were on the board, we, we.
We gave money.
Yeah, we, we waived everything that we possibly could.
We used discretionary funds.
Yes. So there, there was nothing that, I mean, this board was very, very favorable to the school district in every aspect possible. There was nothing that we charged the school that was of our authority to do so. So anything that you guys were charged for the restroom has nothing to do with the city council, that we waived every fee that we possibly could, we provided city resources, city staff, equipment, a water meter was, was given for free, the, the building permits.
Lines were run.
Were free. So everything that we possibly could was given, was donated and gifted to the school district, there was nothing.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate that, and see, this is why we need to meet every year.
Yeah.
Exactly because we have.
We've never been told this at all.
We didn't have a, we should've known that, because we probably should've said, hey, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's exactly why we need to make sure there's open communication, 'cause we have no clue, just like we didn't even know the other agreement existed.
So, and, and one of the things you mentioned a minute ago was a survey you had to pay for? Okay, so, so that, that in itself, okay, like, correct me if I'm wrong here, but like a survey, that's an outside company that comes in, they're going to charge for that.
No, 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 I understand that.
But if we, if we as a city and you wanna do a project and part of our city building fees and stuff, we can, a lot of times, you know, take those off the table to save you money, because it's only, it's only our wages of our guys that are going to do it, they're already doing that kind of stuff. I don't know all the criteria, and I'm just throwing that out.
No, it was the required appraisal on the baseball field that was already yours, but because the deed had not ever been recorded, it had been misplaced.
But you guys were on the board then, right?
Yeah, and neither were we, but we were just brought with, well, we have to pay for the appraisal. It's like, why can't we split that with the city? No, it's our responsibility, which made absolutely no sense, since it was already a complete agreement.
I was on the council then, when that was, when that process occurred and familiar with the fact that it was something, and I don't know what happened in the past, that where it wasn't clearly recorded the way that it should've been or something, but it wasn't something that was presented to council to split the cost.
Well, and see, that's, I guess that's frustration on the board's part, because we're saying, can we do this, and we're being told back, no, we cannot. You have to, you, we, we have to pay for it. So, again, to Trustee Griston's.
Well, we know better now, because this time, what we do, we'll ask them, can we split this?
We'll send you an email, we'll send you an email.
Those are our decisions, and I learned something a long, long time ago, if you don't ask, you don't get.
Absolutely.
Well, and we did get, we did.
But you didn't ask the right, you didn't ask the right person.
That's correct, correct, correct.
And we did ask the right person with the trees coming down, or the tree out of John Brown, 'cause they did play part of that.
Yeah.
That's what we didn't know yet about that, so.
But see, that was one that was brought to me as well, 'cause we tried to do as much partnership with the school district as possible.
And we, we want to do that with the city, please understand that, we do. There's so much that goes on that we should be valuing each other as opposed to trying to draw lines in the sand.
I think our dialogue is, and I have some clearer.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Well, just the fact that we're all here, yes.
And, you know, with the, with the restrooms and all of that kind of stuff, the staff came to, school district staff came to me to work on this, and that's why I got it in front of the board, to make that recommendation. Everything that we've tried to do as far as administration, Lisa and I both are trying to make sure that we have a good partnership between the school district and the city. We both represent, for the most part, a vast majority, both of each other's taxpayers.
Yeah.
And we're looking for the best thing for all of us in general.
Right.
That's the goal. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to tit for tat type of thing.
Right, right.
We're all here for the same people.
Yeah, absolutely, the taxpayers.
And you, aren't we the largest school district in the state of Idaho?
We're the best.
Geographically. She gets grandchildren, actually.
Really? So, so I will say this, I, I went to the state of Rafterham, where the mayor spoke, you spoke, that Wilken Howard guy or whatever from the state spoke, and then some people from the state highway department spoke. And at my table was two county commissioners and the city, and the cow with the corolla and press doing the article, sat right there next to me, and I listened to everything she listened to, and I saw everything she saw. And when the article, the paper came out, it was state highway department's doing all these things and blah, 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 had really nothing to do with Rafterham per se, and then they talked about the, the guy from the employment office, talked about, you know, the, the.
Economics.
Economics of the, of the city and the county and everything. Lisa caught up and hit a home run with her presentation, so did Mike, and the article in the newspaper said, Rafterham, I mean, you were talking about ninety percent graduation rate, our, our alternative school was what, seventy-some percent in state average?
Ninety, ninety.
And the state average is like fifty-three or something, yeah.
Lisa knows her numbers.
And my, yeah, my point is, is that I was very disappointed, and I almost wrote a letter to the editor, and I haven't yet, and I still might, but all they said about us was, oh, well, we did something about a statue, or we got a grant, or did this, or whatever, you know, and they said, the school's patriotic and, what was the other word you used?
Conservative?
No, no, cheering, cheering.
Spirited.
Spirited and patriotic, blah, 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 they didn't mention nothing about our school district, and I was appalled because of our numbers. They gotta be like at the top.
They are. We, we have the highest graduation rate of any alternative high school in the entire state of Idaho.
That's what she said, yeah.
Yeah, we, we are.
I just couldn't remember my numbers, but I was impressed with all the presentations, I was not impressed with the newspaper.
Well, we're all doing a great job, I think.
We got a great school district, and we're proud of you, so.
Well, we wanna maintain that, because it's a reflection of our city as well.
It is.
It is.
So while our attorneys do a nice job of keeping us out of hot water.
Yes.
I think what we heard tonight is, instead of going to the attorneys to ask the questions you're, you're talking about, I just need to go to Leon and say, can you take this to the city council and see if, what, and what they will do about it?
Yeah.
The attorneys like to talk about all the realities and.
I think the PC way of saying is, I think the problem is the people that don't let them run.
Yeah. Agreed. Well, on that note, are we good to terminate the meeting? Or end the workshop?
Or end the meeting.
It's been a long day.
It's been a good meeting.
All right. We're going to adjourn the meeting, thank you for the, it is eight thirteen.